I didn't hear you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome to the town of Powell, regular select board meeting, April twenty seventh, two thousand twenty-three at six P M. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Board member roll call.
Angie Rowling.
Jamie Percy.
Mike Gardner. Approval of the agenda. Public comment, approval of minutes of April thirteenth, twenty-three and April eighteenth of twenty-three. Warrants. Correspondence, liquor and or tobacco license approvals, excess weight permits, unicorn management, request for property ownership transfer to the town. Personnel policy review and revisions, domestic animal ordinance, initial review. Town cemetery, initial discussion. Public comment, executive personnel, executive personnel, discussion regarding a public official, executive contractual, public comment and adjourn. Any additions?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Jamie, I.
Bye bye.
Mike, I. Any public comment, you know? Okay, approval of minutes of April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, select board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections? All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Jamie, I.
Bye bye.
Mike, I. April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, minutes of the emergency select board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, any corrections on that, questions? All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Jamie, I.
Bye bye.
Mike, I. Warrants, accounts payable, April twelfth, or sorry, April twenty-first, dyslexic there. Uh, twenty thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars and five cents.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, any questions? Corrections? All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Jamie, I.
Bye bye.
Mike, I. Accounts payable, April twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three. Hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars and thirty-eight cents.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections? All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Jamie, I.
Bye bye.
Mike, I. Payroll, April twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three, nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one dollars and forty-six cents.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Jamie, I.
Bye bye.
Mike, I. Payroll, April twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three, ten thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars and eight cents.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, any, any questions, corrections? All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Jamie, I.
Bye bye.
Mike, I. Correspondence, any correspondence, Tara?
Yep, so I have one from the garden club and I think Hannah printed you maps to look at. Yeah, so they have requested to, um, well, as you already know, they have a garden plan for, I think it's the east side of the building. The, the side of the building has a really nice view. Um, they have a whole garden stand for there and some chairs and it's going to be a really nice, um, area. Um, in addition to that, they'd like to install shrubs, um, on the opposite side of the building, as well as some cherry trees in between the lower parking and the skating, um, the skate park, uh, to offer more pollinating options, and they're also talking about adding us to maps, um, in the state for pollinator gardens. So we would be recognized in that way. So I was just seeking approval, um, or thoughts on the addition of the shrubs and the cherry tree.
What's the board's pleasure? Um, are these, um, are these dwarf cherry trees, do you know, Tara? I would assume they are both.
I believe so, but I'm not sure.
Okay. I would, I would think that's what they're doing, but.
Is there a added price for this?
No, we're not going to be charged for it. The, um, Parks and Rec has some funds and there's a lot of volunteers, um, that are contributing time and money, um, to the whole thing, so. But no, there's, they're not asking for any money.
I knew they were doing a grant too, so I tried to know additional funding. So, thank you. I give them the green light.
I think it's a great idea, um. I, I think as long as you have, um, continued, um, support and involvement from people within the town, that this is their way to contribute to the town and the town office and what's going on. I, I think it's a, I think it's a great thing. I think it's an awesome, actually.
I think it'll make the building look nicer too, from Route Seven, because it'll cover some of that, um, you know, the cement look.
Yeah.
And also, just as a side note, which is really nice, is that Bill is actually on that committee as well. So he's able to sort of be involved in what's happening and, and know what, um, care might be necessary in the future.
Yeah, that, that's the only thing that I'm a little bit.
The maintenance of them.
The maintenance of the shrubs, but I'm not overly concerned about that, because that's kind of a, you know, if it makes it look better. And, and I think, I think the involvement meeting and people in general that are volunteering and coming in, um, they're, they're hands-on with our, with our town, you know, they might not be part of the road crew or, or their friends first, but they put their hands on with what's going on in town, and I like that. I like it a lot.
Yes.
And it's not in the way of the walkway, correct?
No. Catch them from the, the pictures.
Okay.
They're the proposed area.
What's the board's pleasure?
I make a motion to approve, uh, the, uh, work that the garden committee is, uh, working on.
I'll second it.
Need more discussion? All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Jamie, I.
Bye bye.
Mike, I. And thank you for all of your hard work. We should start to reap the benefits, I'm pretty sure, this year of, of what they've done out in the, in the entrance to the, to the building, so. You know, you know, obviously it'll get better as the years go on.
Um, so that's it for correspondence for me, but just to mention, I am waiting, um, for a letter of interest in being reappointed to his positions from Dave Dentz. Um, he did email me that he wants to continue with them, uh, but I asked him for just a little bit more, um, detail and clarification on the positions that he wanted to be reappointed to. So as soon as I get that, I'll bring that back to you guys, too.
And I apologize, I gotta apologize to you, I totally, after I told you I would contact him today, I totally lost that.
That's okay, we can just do it next time, but I, I do think Hannah has a flyer or something that she needs to share.
Um, so this is from Brownborough Development Credit Corporation. Since dear town administrator enclosed, please find an informational flyer for upcoming event, the sixth annual Southern Vermont Economy Summit, taking place in Wilmington on May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three. We would appreciate it if you would share it with your town select board and also focus it to the public bulletin board for other town board members and visitors to see. We hope that one or more members of your town government might attend this year's summit, which has content specifically geared towards town leaders and is an opportunity to learn directly from local, regional and statewide experts. And just a little, um, excerpt here. Join us for a day-long learning and networking event that focuses on the long-term development of Southern Vermont's economy. It's a great opportunity to gather, think big, learn something new, ask questions and connect as we do the work of forging in our region's future.
What was the date, Hannah? May twenty-third? May twenty-third is a Tuesday. Just in case anybody's wondering. Is there a time on it?
There's not on the flyer either, but I can reach out and see. And if you guys approve to put it on the website, I can just.
Yeah, let's put it on the website. Can we, um, can we also send an email to, um, our D R B and planning commission members? Is, is anybody else, anybody else should, um, should we send one to, um, road crew, wastewater, you know, I don't know if they would go to that, or probably not, probably just our D R B and planning commission?
Okay.
What are your thoughts on that, Bob?
Uh, I, I think, uh, D R B, planning commission and select board are probably the three big ones. Um, and I, I could be wrong, but it, it doesn't seem to me to be something that, uh, the treatment facility or road crew would, would go to.
No, I, I just don't want to exclude them if we thought we should.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. That, that's true. And I do have a question, is there a cost? Like registration or anything, or, or it's just show up?
From my understanding, it's not, it doesn't say anything about that on the flyer, but I can definitely reach out and figure that out. And then when I send out the email, I'll include that in there as well.
How about a sign-up deadline? Is that on the flyer?
I, I don't think so. I think you can just go for the day, but I think those are all good questions. I can reach out and ask.
Okay, perfect.
And that's it for correspondence for me.
Okay, I have liquor license and tobacco approval, but we're ready to move on.
Yeah, I think we're done with correspondence, right? Was that it? You know, okay, so moving on to liquor license, liquor and tobacco license approvals.
Okay, so that I don't totally screw this up like I did the last time, we're gonna do them separately. So the first one is a second-class license at the Pownell Market in Delhi.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Uh, the address for that is Route Seven in Pownell. I don't know the exact address, right? I just want to make sure everybody knows. Um, all those in favor?
Angie, I.
Jamie, I.
Bye bye.
Mike, I.
Okay, so the second is the tobacco license for Pownell Market in Delhi.
So moved.
Second. That's okay.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Jamie, I.
Bob.
And lastly is second-class license for the Royal Enfield of Bennington County, which, um, in case you don't know, they are down in North Pownell. Um, I think they're gonna be opening soon. I'm not sure on their opening date, but that's where they're located.
So moved.
That's the new business that took over Jellies, right?
It is.
Okay.
Where Priscilla had the pizza and everything, around the corner at three forty-six North Pownell Road.
Right.
And get on your iron horse and go.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Jamie, I.
Bye bye.
Mike, I.
Okay, that's it for me.
Uh, excess weight permits.
There are no excess weight permits.
No excess weight permits, perfect. Unicorn management request for property ownership transfer to the town.
Okay, so Kim Caldwell's here. She, um, Unicorn Management, Francisco, um, had to reschedule, but she's still gonna do her portion, because she was supposed to be here as well, um, so.
Hi y'all, can you hear me?
Kim?
Yes.
Hi, um, so I'm Kim Caldwell. I'm with the sites management section at Vermont D E C. Um, and I have a few slides to share. I'm not sure, um, if you have them up in your room and the ability to share online, or if I should just share my screen.
Usually we can, it's, we're having a little trouble with Zoom right now, so if you could pull it up on your screen, that would be very helpful.
Okay, I'll do that.
Thank you.
Oh, it says it's disabled for me.
Hey, I'm gonna just change the settings. Is it letting you share?
No, still not working.
This has been giving us spits all night.
Even the last meeting.
Oh, looks like it's working now. It can make a selection.
Good job, Hannah. I know that's super stressful.
Okay. Um, can y'all see my screen then?
I'm done.
She talking, because now we can't hear.
I think that was a yes, okay, I wasn't sure. That was a yes or. Okay. So, uh, just to, so we're all on the same page, we are, we're talking about, um, the former Warren Wire property. Um, it sits between Center Street and Route Seven and, uh, North Pownell Road. Um, and these are just two images of the site, uh, a more recent photo, which shows that there's still, um, basically a building slab on the property there, and then in the nineteen fifties is when, uh, Warren Wire operated there, and you can see a building from some older imagery. Um, so while I'm here tonight, um, you may be aware that, um, there's an ongoing conversation between the current property owner and, um, American Premier underwriters, which holds a liability, uh, for the contamination at the site, um, and their consultant, Unicorn Management Consultants, uh, which Francisco Trejo is a part of. Um, so they're working on a potential agreement, and in parallel with that, the property owner is hoping that he can transfer the property. Um, and so it was proposed that this would be a potential option for the town to take ownership if interested. Um, and so I'm here to talk about what the process would be to allow the town to take ownership and to not take on any of that environmental liability or financial obligations, um, once the town were to own the site. And so there's a few pieces, um, different processes that would need to happen, where we would work with the town, um, prior to taking ownership to make sure that they are protected. Um, and so I'm gonna be talking about our liability exemption process, um, our umbrella program, which I'll get into the details of what that stands for, and, uh, just the process of conducting a phase-one environmental site assessment prior to purchase. Um, and just a little bit more background, uh, if you're not aware, the site is contaminated with, um, perin polyfluoroalkyl substances. Um, and so if you're not familiar with those, those are man-made compounds that were used, um, for things like waterproofing, um, they're in a lot of manufactured products and, uh, we know that PFAS, specifically PFOA, was used by Warren Wire at their Teflon coating, uh, in their Teflon coating manufacturing process. Um, and so they operated at the site in the nineteen fifties. Um, the EPA first identified contamination at the site in two thousand sixteen. Um, and this was shortly after the current owner took ownership and was not aware of the contamination. Um, Vermont D E C conducted some investigations following EPA's work, uh, mainly to, um, investigate potential impacts to nearby drinking water wells. Um, and eventually we were able to get, um, American Premier underwriters to start doing the work at the site in two thousand twenty, and their consultant again is, um, Unicorn Management or U M C. Um, so if the town were interested in taking ownership of this property, um, the first piece that would need to happen is, um, coming into an agreement with the Agency of Natural Resources and the Agency of Commerce and Community Development. Um, so this, this exemption has been an option in the past for municipalities if they have taken ownership through, uh, something like a tax exemption where it was involuntary. And last year, we were able to amend the statute to allow this to be an option, um, in cases where a town wanted to voluntarily take ownership of a property. Um, and that's always been an option for regional planning commissions, uh, but was never an option for towns until last year. Um, and so we have a template that basically outlines if we would ask the town to do any work during their temporary ownership. It's really meant to be, um, an interim ownership, um, that provides this exemption. And we'd work with the town to outline, you know, what that process looks like. Um, we don't actually expect the town to be doing any of the work, because, uh, APU would be continuing their work while the town owns it, and we would just ask the town to provide access. Um, and then at some point, we would expect the town to market the property to a developer, um, at any point that they wish to do that. Um, and so this process, I would say, between, you know, drafting the agreement and getting signatures from secretaries of both of these agencies, it could take thirty to sixty days. Um, let's see. Uh, the second piece, and especially if the town was thinking about potentially keeping the property long-term, um, we would encourage the town to enroll in our umbrella program, and that stands for the Brownfields Reuse and Environmental Liability Limitation Act. Um, so umbrella is, uh, what the standard process is for really any, anybody looking to purchase a brownfield. Um, there's a five hundred dollar application fee, um, and the approval process is pretty quick, usually less, much less than thirty days. Um, but we would encourage this process, um, you know, if this, if the town wanted to keep the property, because once the work is done, um, they would receive a cer- certificate of completion that provides, uh, liability protection in perpetuity. And so it would protect against any changes in environmental standards, um, if something was found that we didn't expect, um, and like a new issue comes up, the town wouldn't be responsible for dealing with any contamination. And so this is our, our standard process for someone who's purchasing a, a brownfield and looking to redevelop it. Um, it's just that the previous process, the exemption, is something unique that a town can do to not have any liability during the process. Normally, when someone takes on a brownfield, they still hold some liability until, uh, they get through the entire cleanup process, but that wouldn't be the case for the town. Um, and lastly, so the umbrella program and the exemption really cover, um, state liability protections, um, separately, when you buy a property, um, there's potentially federal liability, and the process for being protected against federal liability, um, is conducting a phase-one environmental site assessment prior to purchase. Um, and so this also, um, makes a property owner eligible for federal cleanup money if, if, you know, something like that were ever needed. But this is really another layer of protection that would, um, allow the town to not have any liability at the site and be able to access funding. Um, if for some reason something were to happen where, uh, the responsible party, APU, stops doing work, you know, we would, we would have another avenue to access funding and, and keep the work moving, um, although that's unlikely to happen. Um, this phase-one environmental site assessment, it's really a desktop review of the history of the site, um, and is a document that explains what the environmental issues are. It identifies, um, recognize environmental conditions. And so, uh, um, environmental consultant performs that work, and we would recommend that, uh, the town applies to D E C for funding for this document. Uh, we have funding available, so the town, um, could ask, could ask us, um, to fund this work, and we would have one of our contractors, um, do that phase-one for the town. Um, and so, you know, if all of those pieces are, um, completed before the town takes ownership of the property, we expect that, um, U M C on behalf of APU would continue to do their environmental assessment work. Um, once they're done collecting all the data they need on the property, they would evaluate cleanup options and implement any cleanup that's needed, and likely be conducting long-term monitoring on the site. Um, but we, all we would ask for the town is that access is provided so that work can continue. Um, I wanted to also mention, there's a small petroleum release that's coming across Center Street from another property. Um, it's been well delineated, um, but there's potentially some additional work that needs to happen to address that. And all of that work is already, um, has already been being funded by, uh, the state's petroleum cleanup fund. So again, there's another consultant working on that project, and all we ask is that, um, access is provided for that work to continue. Um, and so that's all I have, and I'm happy to answer questions. Uh, we're really just, you know, wanted to provide the information and engage the town's interests, um, while APU continues their, um, discussions with the current property owner, and, you know, go from there.
Do we have a timeline on the steps of, during the cleanup?
Um, that's part of what APU was planning to discuss a little bit. Um, right now, they're still doing some quarterly monitoring to confirm that the extent of groundwater contamination has been, uh, well-defined, and we're pretty close to that. Um, there, I think they have maybe two quarters more of sampling that they want to do, um, just to confirm with the existing set of wells, uh, that the plume is, is well-defined. And at that point, I believe we'll be, uh, ready to start evaluating cleanup options, and that could include, um, just for example, uh, you know, a limit, limited excavation in areas where soil contamination is really high, and we want to prevent future leaching of PFAS into groundwater. Um, and most likely, uh, part of the remedy will include long-term groundwater monitoring, um, and making sure that uh, drinking water wells in the area are not impacted, and that everything is kind of remaining where it is and, and stabilized. Um, because, you know, there are a lot of technologies that can actually clean up, uh, PFAS in the same way you can do that with petroleum, uh, contamination, but so those are the things I'll be evaluating. Um, and I would say, uh, you know, that could be a year to two years out, and then implementing, um, a cleanup plan.
So if the town decides to keep the land, we couldn't develop it or anything until everything is completed, is that correct?
Um, most likely redevelop it, wouldn't it be possible until we've determined what the cleanup, uh, is going to be, e- especially if that's going to include some sort of soil removal. Um, and because there are a lot of monitoring wells on the property right now that need to be accessed, we'll need to get to a point where we've, uh, delineated everything and then come up with basically, uh, what the redevelopment would be kind of in conjunction with the cleanup. Um, or, you know, wait till everything's done, um, and then redevelop, but you know, if there's certain options with that you're looking at for re, for reuse, um, those can certainly be considered when the cleanup options are being evaluated.
What is the timeline for that? Are you thinking two years, three years, five years?
I would say in the next year, we'll be at a point where we're looking at the, the cleanup option. I would say in the next year, we'll be at a point where we're looking at the cl- the cleanup options. Um, and determining, you know, if, if there's going to be something happening like a, a source removal. Um. But that, that's my best guess at this point.
So Kim and I, and when we had the preliminary, preliminary discussion. Um, with Francisco and, and you were in on that with Han on I. Um. Basically, right now, the access with the current owner is. Limited at best, is that, is that correct? For, for you guys to get in there and do your, what you need to do?
Yeah, I say, you know, the work has been able to continue thus far. Um, but I think. Uh. We're not certain of if the access could be revoked in the future. Or if it will, or if, you know, it will be difficult to retain that access. Um. We know, we know the property owner is, is eager to be rid of the property and. Um. You know, frustrated with the situation that he's in.
Did the property owner recount to us? That's what I'm trying to remember. If we, if they actually sent us a letter?
No.
So this, this. That's where I'm kind of concluded on this.
So, um, unless I'm mistaken, Kim, and you can jump in, um, Hannah and I met with. Uh, the representative from Unicorn Management and Kim was in that, uh, it was a Zoom meeting. Um, I, it was a while ago, you know.
Remember, you mentioned.
That's right, it was quite a while ago, so.
That's why.
Um, I believe um Unicorn reached out to us. Um, with. The property owner's consent, I guess, would be, or, or, you know. The, or how the property owner knows, you know, what's going on. And from what I understand is willing, or at least was willing to transfer ownership. To the town of Pownell. Um, for whatever, a dollar or whatever, whatever it is, it's, it's not a purchase, it's basically free. Um, the questions that Hannah and I had were, what are our liability? You know, which Kim explained totally for us, because it's like, okay, I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna get involved in that with, you know, if the town's gonna be liable. But Kim, as she has tonight, explained that. The town bas- basically comes up with zero liability for cleanup and what, and what's happened there. Um, the, the way I understood it is it gives, um. It gives Unicorn Management and, and their, the underwriters and uh the state and federal government. The ability to get in there guarantees them, if the town takes ownership. It basically guarantees them the ability to get in and do whatever needs to be done.
Clean it up.
To clean it up and then, and then we can. The town, when I say we, it's probably gonna be, might not be under this board, maybe someone different, you know, because it could be a few years out. But it gives the town the ability to either. Turn that into a, a park or um, we, they could, we could sell it, is that, that's.
Right, so.
Kim, we could, we could sell it for redevelopment. Um, you know, and I'm, I'm trying to remember, it was a while ago when we had that conversation, but. Um, you know, and feel, like I said, feel free to jump in anytime, so.
What is the size of the lot?
I don't know, do you know what the size is, Kim? I don't remember. It's a good question, Ange.
You know, I had that up earlier, let me find it really quick.
I don't reme- I don't remember what the size is.
I was just wondering if it was something down the road, if we could subdivide it, if it was big enough.
Well, yeah, because I'm pretty sure because it's in the village zone.
And, and that, oh, that can be connected to sewer.
Hmm.
Okay, that was my question.
I, I just, I guess I'm confused that outside entities reached out. I understand why now, because they're looking for continued access to the property.
Hmm.
Because he's at the point now, the way I understand it, the owner is, he wants to just, he could like say.
He wants to wash his hands and get away.
Wants to wash his hands, or he could say to them, no more testing, you're done.
I'm just surprised.
Does that correct, Kim?
I'm surprised the owner.
He, he has. Um, stated that that is something he wants to do. Um, that is not to his benefit, because, you know, he's allowing access to. APU to do the work as a responsible party. Um, if APU is not allowed to do the work because he's denying access, he as the property owner is liable.
Oh, I see, yeah.
Even though he did not cause the contamination. So the responsibility ultimately falls to him if he refuses access to other parties.
Okay.
It's, what do you say, Hannah, just over three acres?
Just under three.
Or just under three acres?
Yeah, that's what I have, two point nine acres. Um, and, and I would mention too, there, a lot of the site is uh considered a wetland area.
And if we um got into the umbrella and it's five hundred dollar fee, is that an annual fee or is that just a one-time fee?
That's just a one-time application fee.
And so then we wouldn't have to apply again.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
But there's two five hundred dollar fees, two separate.
Right.
Uh, thanks.
It's just, there's just a fee for Brella, there's not a fee for any of the other, for the exemption. Um, and the phase one is something that DEC could fund, so it's just the one fee.
Okay.
Okay, I thought I saw prior to the Brella slide, there was another five hundred dollar application fee. For either the ANR or the ACC yard piece.
No, that, the exemption um with that, the two agencies, there's no fee for that, it's just drafting an agreement that gets signed.
Thank you.
Bob, do you have any questions?
I don't.
And you're, we're, we're not, we're not asking right now to um.
Make a decision.
Make a decision on that, Kim is just doing a presentation.
Right.
On her part, and, and I believe Unicorn Management has a presentation for us as well. Um, Hannah, did we, I know we asked him to provide us. Uh, synopsis of his presentation before, did he provide that to us?
He just called today and said it wasn't ready, he needed some more time, so he wasn't gonna be here, but then Kim was so.
Okay.
Yeah, I would say most of the presentation was, was information that I just gave you. They were just gonna give a little bit more uh related to their potential timeframe for their work. Um, and I know they did want to be able to provide. An update related to their agreement with the property owner, um, which is happening in, in parallel, but since that. Wasn't able to happen by today, um, they, they decided to cancel. Um.
I know this is a question that we asked before. Um, and I don't remember the answer to it, and I apologize, Kim. So if the town were to take ownership of this property. And we were to uh five years, just hypothetically, five years down the road. Uh, everybody determines that it's, it's clean and, and we can redevelop it or we can sell it. The town, the town can sell it for whatever fair market value is, is that correct? I mean, because if we take ownership through things through a tax sale, you know, we, we can't make money on those. The town can, municipal, municipality can't. So this is something that you could potentially down the road sell for twenty thousand dollars. And, you know, and I'm, I'm being hypothetical, obviously, but, uh, and that would just come into the general fund, is that, is that correct?
Um, I'm not really familiar with, you know, what the town or can't, can or can't do. Uh, I don't know of any reason why the town couldn't sell the property for a certain price. Um, it's certainly something that, you know, regional planning commissions and regional development corporations do when they go through this process. Um. But that's not really.
Probably a question.
Something that I'm familiar with.
Probably a question for our attorney.
I think Hannah's got an answer, actually, I see her eyes.
We stopped at the LCT when we first talked about this.
I thought so.
And they did recommend, like Bob said, reaching out to our town attorney, but they also said, um. You are correct, Jonah, speaking the town can't be in the business of flipping properties for profit, but there may be ways to recoup costs. Um, again, the town attorney should be involved in answering these questions, so.
Okay.
So meaning that if we, if we take ownership of the property and we end up selling it, the, the best we're gonna do is break even. But of course, it'll be back on the tax roll.
Right, exactly. I'm just trying to ask the questions, Bob, that we asked in the, you know, or trying to refresh my own memory, to be honest with you. Um, when Han, when Hannah and I met with them, you know, back a month ago.
That's why I wasn't sure when she initially stated the temporary ownership. I didn't know, we're supposedly keeping it temporarily while they do their work and then it reverses back to this. Kind of the old present owner or?
No, the way I understand it, and cr- and correct me if I'm wrong, if we, if we obtain ownership, we, we agree to. Take ownership from the party that owns it now. We become the owners of record forever until we do something different with it.
Right, till we.
Yeah, and the, the agreement, um, that's kind of the reason that the Agency of Commerce and Community Development is part of that initial exemption agreement. Is because it will outline, you know, what the town's plan is. Um, most likely to be for marketing the property to a developer. Or, you know, if they intend to keep it, um, you know, that's something that doesn't. That could change, um, but, you know, that's, that's why they're involved in that process.
All right.
It's typically, it's typically a temporary ownership because this process is useful. Um, in cases where a municipality or regional planning commission. Uh, takes on a, a, a challenging site and is able to access grant funding. That other for-profit entities are not able to access typically. And so they're kind of able to clean up a property and get it ready for a developer, um, and make it more marketable. To those for-profit entities.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Anybody else have any questions for Kim? I think we've been, yeah, I, I think, you know, covered, covered everything I had.
Few more down the road, maybe, but.
Well, yeah, you know, I'm sure, I'm sure we're gonna be talking to Kim again about this project if, if we decide to take ownership or whatever. I think we need to hear from Unicorn Management.
Yeah.
And then, and then, you know, weigh our pros and cons as a board and, and come up with what we wanna do. Um, you know, I, I, I came in, I'll be honest, when, when I met the first time on the internet, you know, I was kind of a negative. Nancy on the whole thing, but, you know, at the end of the, at the end of our meeting. Um, it seemed like the pros far outweighed the cons to me, so. You know, at least, at least trying to get it cleaned up and, and getting things taken care of and moved forward with, with the, with the problem. At no cost to the town, which is what I was.
Right.
Happy, happy to hear. Well, thank you, Kim, I appreciate your, your um presentation tonight, I think you've answered everybody's questions and. Like I said, I'm sure we'll be back in touch, um. Before, before the process at least gets completed one way or the other.
Okay. Sounds good, thank you, have a great evening.
You too. Okay, personnel policy review and revisions.
Okay, so just a real quick recap, we had our personnel policy you guys approved last February, right, right before I came in. Um, and then in June, there's a federal holiday that was um celebrated or observed. By most town offices, which um you guys decided that we could have that as a paid holiday, but we never approved the addition of that to the personnel policy. And we also never approved the addition of the um office appearance policy. Which I realized when I sent it, I sent you the personnel policy, I didn't add all of that stuff right into the document, so. Um, if you choose to approve it all, it would be with the changes of adding that stuff in.
So do you wanna wait and, and bring this back next meeting with the, with all of those changes, or do you wanna approve it with the changes?
It's up to you, I mean, you have all of the information. Um, that I would be adding to it, just that Juneteenth holiday.
So the personal, yeah, the June tenth or Juneteenth pol- Juneteenth. Holiday, which is literally Flag Day, correct? When I understand it?
Hmm.
And then adding. The office.
Yeah, the office appearance policy, which will, it, that just sort of ensures that we can keep the office looking professional and inviting. For years to come regardless of who's there for staff.
Right, so I make a motion that we add Juneteenth Flag Day in for um one of the holidays. Under the personal policy and to also add the town panel office appearance policy. Affected immediately.
So I can do that.
Isn't there a waiting period when we, oh no, that's an ordinance.
That's an ordinance, yeah, it's an order.
Yeah, okay, just wanted to make, I answered my own question.
And just so that um the public is aware, what I plan to do is now that we've updated this, I'll send it to all the employees. Um, and have them sign off that they've received it and reviewed it and received it. And then if there are non-employees such as elected officials, we can have them sign a non-employee agreement that just says that they'll adhere. Or, um, you know, abide to those standard, the same standards as a appointed employee.
And that should be a yearly thing.
Yeah, that's what, that's what my plan is, every, every year in April, I'll redo that process.
Yeah, thank you, Tara.
I mean, or you could take it and do the initial, and then if you're doing annual evaluations, you can take an update of them.
Yeah, yep.
Okay, I have a motion for, I have a second, any more discussion on the personnel policy and review and revisions? All is in favor?
Angie, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Mike, aye. Domestic animal ordinance and initial review.
Okay, so this was just, like I said, very initial review. Um, I sent that all to you earlier. And it has been reviewed by the lawyer, he went through it with me, sort of line by line, um, with Rebecca's notes that were on it, which was very helpful. Um, and he made suggestions, which I, which I went through and made those corrections. And now I just sort of wanted um everyone's opinion, especially on the fines. Because um Mr. Fisher says we can go up as far as five hundred and we're on the lower side of the fines. Um, and so I just wanted your opinion on that stuff and on the overall looks of it, the feel of it. Um, all of that, and then I'll send it back to him for sort of final reviews before starting, you know, the, the whole process.
So, correct this me if I'm wrong, didn't we have a discussion one time about um poultry? Keeping them in the, their own property and did I not see anything in here, or did I miss it?
I did not put that in there because it's, it's um a tricky one. But if you want me to try to.
Rearrange poultry is gonna be tricky.
Yes.
Okay, it is tricky because um saying that you have to keep them in your yard, I don't, I don't really know, I don't know how, how our community will feel about that. What, what.
I just remember having a discussion about it.
I know, and I think Leonard would like to see a little bit more regarding that, you know, the poultry. But I'm not sure how to address it and I haven't seen it in any other.
Okay, I just remembered discussing it and I just wanted to bring it up.
Yeah.
I guess what we'll have to do is look at the definition of free range and it needs to stay on their said property, own property.
I just know that there was a problem at one time.
Yes, no, I, and that's why I'm. It's kind of where.
Cause it does say poultry, swine.
Yes.
Fodden and partridge and all that, domestic animals.
Yeah, because it includes any domestic animals, so.
Right, so I guess we're covered.
It just doesn't specifically state poultry and I think in the ordinance that you're speaking of that um Megan may have been working on, maybe Tim. It specifically stated what they needed for housing or coops and it had like a lot of detail that was just, um. No, it wasn't really what we were looking for, I don't think.
Okay. I was fine with it, I didn't see anything that jumped out at me except for that one question.
About the poultry?
Yeah, and it's in there, it does say the best domestic animals, it says poultry, presence and partridge. Quail, parrots, I mean, people should try to keep.
Feather-bearing critters.
Whatever. Everybody that owns any kind of animal should keep it on their own property. Don't be a nuisance to your neighbor.
Bearing, feather bearing.
Why is she laughing?
I don't know.
Are you awfully tired tonight, Karen?
I am. That's why I'm home and my videos are.
That's all right, we'll forget.
Are, if we're comfortable, I guess, with this, are, are we comfortable with the fines?
You know, I don't think we're out to make tons of money. I mean, I, we just want people to take care of their animals and to. So I'm comfortable with the fines.
Any more discussion?
Uh, this is our, uh, I, I'm sorry, I'm late asking this, but this is in our, uh, uh, I'm looking for it in our email.
Yeah, it is in the email.
In tonight's.
It's in a Windows doc. Cause I'm still working on it.
I'm sorry, say that again.
It's a Windows document, cause I'm still working on it. I think it's called like work in progress, domestic.
Are we looking for approval tonight?
No, 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 just, um, initial thoughts and ideas and. Um, your thoughts on the fines in particular.
I guess my thought on the fines is we need to have a, just, I don't know if it's a one-line verbiage. Because we do. Have people that. They're, they're paying their fine, but they're. It doesn't seem to bother them that their animals get away. Um, if I remember, uh. Leonard speaking on a certain incidents. And he's fined them and they paid it and it's. So I don't know if it's a continuation. Issue and I don't know Leonard wants to chime in. As far as a certain number that then it, then it may exceed, somehow we need to. To a more stricter tone, I guess, I.
Yeah, we can definitely, I can, um, touch base with Leonard on that and it does say. Um, after so many times, you know, they have to complete, I don't have it right in front of me, but. They have to complete the, um, you know, like an online training course or something.
Yeah, I see that too and I agree with that. I just. There's some people. That they just don't find paying. And even if it's thirty times later, I guess. Hey, where I'm going.
Well, I think that's, I think that's our biggest question, um. Is the fines. So I guess, Tara, why don't we do this? Um, it looks like the only questions that anybody has basically are fines.
Yeah.
Um, so. Um. As a board, let's send our recommendations in an email to, for, for the fines. We'll send our recommendations to Tara. Um, and we'll vote on the fines for, at the next meeting to impose. Whatever, whatever fines we decide as a board, that'll be what they are.
Yeah, and I'll get, I'll get Leonard's opinion on it too before the next meeting and then.
Yeah. And then in our next regular meeting in May, we can, um. Certainly say yea or nay on this whole thing and get it in process and get it done.
Yay, I'll be so glad to do that.
Yeah, no, I know.
Oh, absolutely.
It looks like that's our, so rather than hash out, rather than hash out fines tonight, so we can get everybody out of here, let's.
No, that's good. We're, I'm good with that.
Send, send an email to Tara and go from there.
To be clear, uh, our feedback won't be limited to fines, but, but. It sounds like that's where everybody's focused.
Exact, yeah, exactly, Bob, sorry. I don't wanna limit it to that, absolutely. If there's some feedback, just get it back to Tara and we'll adjust whatever we need to and we'll finalize an ordinance. Uh, to send to the lawyer and we should have it done in, in four weeks. Yep.
Perfect.
Town cemetery, initial discussion. Are you done? Are you good with that now, Tara? You're good with that, right?
Yep, I'm good. And the next, the next one is me too, um. So basically, as you guys are aware, we took over Oak Hill back in April, I believe, of twenty-two. Um, I was so new to the job, I was very overwhelmed with different, um, tasks and I. You know, overlooked many things that need to happen with cemeteries and basically we should, um, establish a cemetery fund. But we can't really do that until we do that with the voters, so. Um, in an effort to save money, I don't wanna do, you know, a special election or anything like that. But in order to get prepared for, you know, the next year's election and to hopefully establish a fund. I'm hoping that you will approve me using possibly some money out of, um, the rehab housing. The housing rehab loan that we had discovered we can reuse. A, a small amount, not a small amount, but. Enough to establish with a program called Semify. Um, who I've been referred to through the North Bennington Cemetery. People, um, I've worked with Mar Har's Funeral Home. Suggested that I use that program because it's a mapping program. They'll train me how to. Do all of the, um, mapping and the data tracking because we have, you know. Our land records have cemetery recordings in them that don't match the maps that I have. And there's a lot of, um, recording issues, not, I'm not saying with Julie or town clerk wise, I mean, like cemetery map wise. They just don't match, um, any, it's really tricky to figure out. Um, and I can't rightfully continue to sell plots. Um, until I know which ones are available. Um, so currently, just so everyone is aware, if people call me for Oak Hill, I've been referring them to the North Pownell Cemetery. And that happens to be taken care of by Cindy Brownell right now. Um, she did mention that that might not be for much longer. So I have a feeling we could end up with all of our town cemeteries and if we don't have any room. It, it's a goal of mine to find more land. Um, because I know I'd like to be buried in Pownell and I know a lot of people would, so. It's frustrating for me to have to say no when people call. Um, so that's the sort of urgency of getting the program and the mapping system in place.
And how much is that program and the training?
So they say an annual cost is anywhere from a thousand to five thousand depending on your size of your cemeteries. Um, but initially it would just be, I was hoping to get five thousand approved so I could get it started.
What's the board's position?
And we can use that money and remind me, was it twenty-one thousand or twenty-two thousand?
I think it was nineteen and some change.
I think it's nineteen.
Yeah, and we can use it, um, how we see fit. I would just, um, you know, have you word, word it just right in your approval. Um, and I would word it as up to five thousand. I may not, I may not need the full.
It's a board's pleasure. I, I know my personal feelings on this are, um.
We need to take care of it.
We need to take care of the cemetery. So we, uh, there, there are. Ancestors, there are elders, there are former, um.
Absolutely.
Select board members, wha- whatever, they're, they're here. That's my feeling, um, you know, there, there are people who have lived here. And, and have, have family who have roots and so. I'm all for it. That's just my personal opinion.
And it will, it, it will help with a lot of, um, you know, ancestry or like people researching their family history. I, we have a lot of requests, you know, do you know if my parent is buried in, in this cemetery? Even a historical cemetery that's down the road from the town office, um, isn't documented very well.
Correct. I guess, I guess my question, Tara, is, is, um, will it take into account private cemeteries as well?
Um.
Or just a town?
I'm sure we could because Pownell is not very big and the cemeteries are not very big.
But there's quite a few of them.
There is quite a few and we, we actually as a town, I believe mow them all.
Well, I mean, I, I know personally, you know, we, we have a private cemetery at the farm. That, you know, that's, that's where my dad's buried. I was just curious if it would take into those. Take into account those private cemeteries. Not, I'm not asking for somebody to come mow, we take care of. I just for the mapping purposes, but it, yeah, the location, that, that's right. I, I was just curious about that, that's all, you know, not.
I think it should because, and it does get recorded in our land records when you have a private cemetery and you do a burial on your property, so. I don't see any reason we couldn't include that with the.
Yeah, I would just, you know, just a curiosity thing for me. I mean, I know.
Yeah, cause who knows? I mean, a hundred years down the line, I mean, your great, great, great grandchild might wanna be, you know, looking for that info.
I, I know there's a cemetery on, I know there's a cemetery on Carpenter Hill, but I bet you there's not ten people in the entire town know where it is, so.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, you know, I've known it was there since I was a little kid, but.
And it's important to, to take care of them. I mean, perpetual care on our cemeteries is, is definitely lacking, so. Um, it's, it's been a goal of mine. It's just taken me a really long time to get to this point even, so.
So Tara, do you really think that up to six thousand dollars is enough?
Up to five? That's to get me started with the Semify program and then I'll come back with what I've learned from them because I don't. Like I said, we can't really establish a fund, so I don't really wanna start on that, those lines. I just wanna. Get us as prepared as possible and, um, then as soon as I know next steps, I'll come back.
So I'll make a motion to take up two five thousand dollars out of the nineteen thousand from, what is that called?
It's the. Housing rehabilitation loan.
There you go. For Tara to, um.
Start the cemetery.
Start the cemetery, yes.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Jamie, I.
Bob, I.
Mike, I. Tara, I, I wanna, um. Thank you, that you and I have had this discussion, um, about this. You, when we took over, when we took over, um, Oak Hill. And I know it's a huge thing and I know you have the same feelings as I do on the, on the cemeteries, but, um. Personally, I think it's, I think it's an awesome thing.
Yeah, definitely. And luckily, right now I have, um, Kenny Odell has been really helpful, um, with Oak Hill, so.
Yeah.
I'm sure he will be amazed at what we can do with that mapping system compared to what he's had to deal with, so I can't wait.
Right, no, and you know, again, thank you for that, taking on this task.
Hey, Mike?
Yep.
The cemetery you were talking about on Carpenter Hill, was that Eldridge?
The one on, the one on is Potter.
Oh, okay, all right. I, I tried to help a, a citizen years and years ago. On the select board who was looking for that old cemetery. Had no idea where it was, but I eventually found it on a map. On Carpenter Hill, so there's at least another one of the bottom.
Yeah, 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 there's, there's, um. You know, and there's, there's a lot of old cemeteries when you start traveling around through town, when you're out in the woods, there's, there's headstones. There's more headstones than you.
Get surprised.
Realize that are out there.
Yeah.
You know? It, it's, it's amazing and, I mean, I, I personally, not to take up a lot of time, but. I personally find them extremely interesting when you go into an old cemetery and read, you know, the, the, some of the headstones are pretty cool. They're, you know, it's just something I've.
Some of the information around.
Some of the information on them is really, it's really interesting. It really is, you know? It's, it's just something I've always done, so. Um, perfect. Any public comment, Hannah? Okay.
Jimmy, can you go ahead?
Hi, guys, um, very interesting discussion about the. Oh, I'm sorry, Jim Coes's North Mason Hill Road.
Thank you.
Very interesting, um, discussion on the, uh, property transfer or whatever, but I just wanna make sure in the future. I, I, I heard her say and I do know that that area is a wetlands area. Um, just as listening to her, there's just concerns with the properties around that area. I just wanna make sure maybe any future discussions on it. That the butters are notified, um, about the discussion. I'm not sure if they were notified about that tonight. But, um, I just wanna make sure whatever decision you guys make, um, also involves them to find out. What ramifications down the road this wetlands could, um, affect them, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Any more public comment, Hannah? And that's a, that's a good point. We, um, when we bring in Unicorn Management, we probably should notify the butters. Okay. All right, executive for personnel.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I don't. I don't think there's gonna be action. All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Jamie, I.
Bob, I.
Mike, I. I'll entertain a motion to come out of executive.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Jamie, I.
Bob, I.
Mike, I. I'll entertain a motion to enter executive for personnel discussion regarding a public official.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, no action. Um, will be taken. All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Jamie, I.
Bob, I.
Mike, I.
Yeah, a hip replacement though is way easier.
Oh, I know, I'm trying, I, I have to. We're, we're good? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to come out of executive for personnel discussion regarding public official.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Angie, I.
Jamie, I.
Bob, I.
Mike, I, and there's no action. I'll entertain a motion to go into executive for contractual.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Jamie, I.
Bob, I.
Mike, I. Good? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, come out of executive for contractual.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Angie, I.
Jamie, I.
Bob, I.
Mike, I, and there's no action. Um, I have a couple of, uh, correspondence that we missed under public comment. Um. Julie's training, Julie has applied for some, uh. Asked for some, uh, uh, training session, um. I think it was for eleven hundred dollars or thereabouts and, um, the money is in her training budget, so. It's the board's pleasure.
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Jamie, I.
Bob, I.
Mike, I, and, uh, I missed Joel's, um, in the correspondence, we missed Joel's blacktop.
Emailer.
Email, um, so we need to send, um, we need to give him the go-ahead to, uh. Look for some blacktop bids for, for this coming here.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Jamie, I.
Bob, I.
Mike, I. Is there any more public comment, Hannah? All hands up. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Jamie, I.
Bob, I.
Mike, I. Thank you everyone for attending and hopefully we can get this little glitch figured out.
Cat TV is celebrating thirty years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next thirty years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.